County Board of Supervisors, January 16th, 2025. Mr. Pastor Snodgrass, would you do the invocation?
Almighty God, we gather here at the start of a new year and ask your blessings to be upon it. Not just the conversations of this evening, but all the proceedings throughout all of 2025. Bless our administration, bless our supervision, bless the laborers, the workers in the fields and the roadways of our great county. Have all that we do be in prosperity and most importantly, unity. Lord, thank you. Thank you for all that you have bestowed upon us and allowing us to be stewards of these things. Bless all of the conversations, the decisions, and the actions that we take. We thank you for all of this in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval agenda, motion to approve or approve with amendments.
So moved.
Seconds.
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to do amend it if we could. I'd like to, if we would go into closed session to discuss, sell up property and assets if we could, if that'll all right.
Mr. Chairman, my motion stands with the amendment.
And if my second stands with the amendment.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, agenda's ready to go. Everybody looked at their minutes?
Yes, sir.
Like a motion to approve, adopt or approve with amendments, the amendments, the minutes from December 19th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're gonna move on to delegations of the public. And as always, the delegation from the public is for this agenda or last meeting's agenda. Andre's got it for us. And just one tonight, Mr. Abbott, come on up.
Yeah, I give it back to her. Thank you. You've been on vacation or AWOL or something, ain't ya?
Good evening. Chairman, members of the board.
Mr. Abbott.
County Administrator Bowen, I thank you for the opportunity. First of all, as Mr. Rourke indicated, I have been gone for the last couple of months. Doesn't mean I haven't been monitoring what goes on because I stand here tonight in no other capacity other than a member of the community, a citizen. Not in any other capacity that I might be a part of. I want to compliment the board on establishing ethical standards. You might not be the first in the Commonwealth, but I believe you're the first here in the county to establish ethical standards. My concern with that is about delegations from the public. Allowed to speak about agenda for tonight and the previous regular meeting. Yet there were several meetings in between. That doesn't seem to be included in a citizen's ability to discuss what might have happened at either of those two meetings. Only a regular meeting, which was the December 19th meeting, and this current one. I would hope that the board would see that delegations from the public should be, even with the restriction on time, whatever any citizen chooses to bring to this board, irrespective of whether it's on this agenda or any previous agenda. But tonight I have one, maybe two. In the current package, there is a contract, I believe it's a contract, for some $270,000 for the five-year activity at the BB&T building at $4,500 a month. Would the board be so kind as to share with me and others, if they're interested, if there is $22,500 in the current budget to cover the cost from May through June of the current year? I'll give you an opportunity to take that under advisement since I didn't hear anything.
I believe you're gonna address that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you will address that with J-2, and it's $22,500 from February to June. Okay, so it's five months. It's the money I'm asking you to allocate in this budget. And yes, there is.
It's being addressed tonight, Mr. Abbott.
It's under J, it's gonna be under J-2.
Then hopefully you'll be able to explain that it is currently in the budget.
Yes, sir. I'll explain, I'll tell you what line item's coming out.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that because I would hope that each of you believe, I would hope that each of you believe that when you're spending taxpayer money, it needs to be done publicly.
Agreed.
I would hope you all agree with that.
Yes, sir.
And I'd like to just reinforce that delegations from the public should be, whatever a citizen, any citizen chooses to speak to this board about for the time allotted, whether it's 90 seconds or five minutes, or some time other than that. But they should be able to address whatever they choose to address for delegations of the public. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott. All right, we're gonna have public hearings, E, 1A. We're gonna do both parcels in one hearing or separate hearings?
Let's do separate, yes, yes, separate.
All right, need a motion to open the public hearing for tax parcel 5211I, 225 Butterwood Trail, Blackstone, Virginia.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And Mr. Chairman, Ms. Kelly did put a map in their gray book, you know, to so you can see it better. If in your package it's not as clear, so I just wanted, so you understand where we're talking about. And that's that Butterwood, that 23 acres, while we're waiting to get the public started, 23 acres, at 225 Butterwood Trail, that's the first one. It's where that, I think Buddy spent some time, it's where that building caught fire at that.
Correct. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? No one wishes to speak, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, I need a motion to open the public hearing on the sale of part of tax parcel number 43-130, Dominique Corner Road and Route 40. Make a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing for tax parcel, part of tax parcel 43-130 is open. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? No one wishes to speak, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, any board discussion?
Steve, could you explain to the public exactly what it is we're selling?
So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I mean, thank you, Mr. Ingram. So if you look at that first picture, that's where the building is, that's where the switchgrass process is. That building was built, it was called a farm-to-fuel project. FDC has been renting that building about, I guess now, five to six years. He's expanding his business. He is, he wants to take that building and make some repairs to it. It did do some damage. We had meetings with the, I had the building official right there to make sure it was safe for him to utilize it. And that's part of, that's the first section, 1A. 1B, that parcel is, and it was really hard to, what are they, Bill, Mr. Collins and Mr. Toad and I went to Sussex County to look at what he's to plan to expand there. And I'm trying to think of the name of that term, is where you can take the fuel, turn it to fuel.
Well, he takes, he takes waste wood and creates a kind of a methanol, which is gonna be airline, you know, airline fuel.
Right.
And then he also has the waste ash.
Like fly ash.
Fly ash.
Right.
That's then applied to farms to improve organic matter. And that is built and in Waverly, it was not operating the day that we were there, but it is there and a couple of jobs.
And the railroad spur was important because he wants to take that liquid fuel and be able to put it on a track and ship it out of here. The, I am planning to, he's, once he gets his, gets a little deeper into his business adventure, he wants to venture, he wants to come to a work session and get, have y'all really understand what he's planning to do there.
All right, and just for the public as well, what was the selling price?
For the parcel 5211, let me just go by address, 225 Butterwood Trail was 135,000, and Dominique Corner and Route 40 was 130,000. And I believe on that, on that, from what he gathered, he was hoping to get somewhere between 10 to 15 jobs is what he told us for that Dominique Corner project.
And I do believe he plans on spending a pretty substantial sum of money on some additional improvement.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, two quick things I would ask, just for the public's knowledge to the attorney. Have we met all our legal criteria in this, in this, in this matter as far as being able to surplus and sell? Is that correct?
Um, I believe so, yes. Like I've spoken to Andrea and Steve previously, we're just waiting on various matters to get all the documents together.
Yeah, I think, I think the tricky part is gonna be giving me the authority to sign these documents when it's, when you take, when it's a land transfer, who has the authority to county administrate? And we gotta get, we gotta get that verbiage right, if the way I understand it.
That's right, and we're working on contracts to ensure that.
With the legal description.
Right.
And then the second part of that, if I may, we are okay if someone would like to make a motion to pass this tonight for the selling price, is that correct?
Yes.
With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve the sale of tax parcel 52-11-I, otherwise known as 225 Butterwood Trail, Blackstone, for the price of $135,000.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody wanna make a motion on 43-130?
I'll make a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move that we agreed to sell part of tax parcel number 43-130, Dominique Corner Road and Route 40 for the asking price of, who was it, Steve?
130,000.
130,000.
Right, I think it's about 8.4 acres, Mr. President.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, one point of clarification on this matter here. Do we need a separate motion to make sure we can go ahead and give him the authority to execute any and all documents come in?
I would say let's go ahead and do that.
Okay.
And another matter, is this, this land hasn't been surveyed yet, has it? Because I don't see no legal description. I see 8.4, it sounds like it's been surveyed, but I don't see a legal description.
So the legal description is part of the, pulled up with some of the deeds, we're just trying to go back and find the exact legal description. We're currently in contact with the surveying company who did the original parcels, so we should have a legal description.
In the event that needs to be surveyed, at whose cost that needs to be.
In the event that needs to be surveyed, at whose cost that needs to be?
That should be the land purchaser.
Purchaser.
I think, I think the way we understood it's going to be the purchaser, and he-
It's going, all might lie within the sales contract, how it's written.
Yes.
Right. So let me say this.
We are working on now.
Oh, okay. Good enough.
Any survey costs are the purchaser's responsibility?
I know it seems like we might be putting it, excuse me for talking over you, Catherine, but it's, it may seem like we're putting it, maybe the chicken before the egg, or egg before the chicken, or horse, horse in front of the cart, I don't know what you want to call it. But he really needs to know that he can buy this because he's getting a loan, he's also getting grant money for this project. A lot. And so, because it's definitely, it's that going green again.
Right.
Anyway.
All right. Well, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd like to make a motion to allow County Administrator Bowen to execute all documents as long as legal counsel has authorized all pertinent information in the form of documents.
Okay.
Pertaining to real estate? Yes.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Catherine. All right. We'll move on to presentations, department reports. Virginia Department of Transportation, Mr. French.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good evening.
Hey, gentlemen.
Everybody's doing well this evening?
Good, good.
Crews have been busy still on Route 46 on the bridge project. No delays in the past month, still on schedule for spring completion. The R cut at 723 in Route 460. I had a chance to sit down yesterday with the construction manager on that project, take a look at the set of plans. The project was awarded to JR Kaski. It's a site development contractor out of Richmond. I've heard they've got a pretty good reputation with the department, so should be a relatively turnkey contract on that. We do have a pre-construction meeting on February 3rd for that project. Be reaching out to our locality partners as well as the partners at the state facilities adjoining the project as well. Get everybody in the loop on our schedule and traffic impacts on that project. Took a sneak peek at our paving contracts that's going to be advertised next week. This will be full paving on our secondaries in the 2025 season plant mix contracts. We have our final section of 723 is going to be on that, so that'll be that last southern part of 723. Be looking forward to see that get paved here in the coming season. Our shoot road speed study is still ongoing. Traffic engineers had a little bit of a delay with that. However, in the meantime, myself and our incident management coordinator reached directly out to schools. We got a list of every school bus stop on that road, so we're going to take a look at each stop individually.
Thank you.
See if signage is warranted and see if we can make any improvements to site distance otherwise on that route.
All right, great.
And we'll tie that in with the speed study and have a full report.
Yeah, that's great news.
If you have traveled westbound 460 in the past day or so, you may have noticed mile marker signs going up on 460. I say we've been working on it, but really the, the award goes to Mr. Hyde and Ms. Bryant prior to her departure. We've worked on this project for about a year. To get the mile marker signs installed on 460, they'll go from the Dinwiddie to Prince Edward signs at half mile intervals, both westbound and eastbound. Be a big help to VDOT, EMS, emergency services, police, everybody knowing where you are on the road. So they have done westbound from the Dinwiddie line to crew, they'll continue west and then work east in the next two weeks or so, whether. No real updates on maintenance side of the house as we have been busy dealing with snow the past couple of weeks and cleaning up from it, working on equipment and getting ready for the next one.
Yes, Sunday.
We'll see, yes. Hopefully Mother Nature gives us a little bit of a break this weekend. That is all I have. What can I do for the board this evening?
Thank you for filling the potholes on 49. It was a mess.
We've, we've had our injector patch and truck the past couple of weeks, so should be hitting some potholes here.
Appreciate that.
I'd like to commend the DOT workers for, for the snow removal, and that was, it was pretty swift, and they worked a lot of hours, as well as the ice getting that treated. They've done a good job.
It's been about two weeks straight, and we went to, we have different mobilization levels. We went to a mobilization level that we haven't been at in over three years.
Is that right?
And to get everything done as quickly as we did, we did not have a single injury or accident during any of the, either event, so very well executed.
Mr. French, if I may, and again, I'd like to repeat Mr. Toad's sentiment, they did a fantastic job. There's a couple of areas of concern, you know, once they've, once they've plowed some of these. And one, I've gotten several phone calls on, and I believe it's specifically because of the parents traveling to the school on Sunnyside Road. It's, it's down at the bottom, it's protected by the trees, but it's, it's still pretty icy there. A gentleman, ladies, as recently as yesterday evening, sent me a picture of it. I didn't know if there's anything that we can do because there's possibly a lot of traffic over there. I don't want to see nobody get in an accident or anything. If we can get some salt or some sand or something put on that. Okay, thank you.
Mr. French, let me ask one, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. So, Mr. French, the, I have, I have a goal of trying to get the voter registration relocated to Blackstone sometime February, March, April. It's a lot of process that has to happen for that to happen. I notice there's a VDOT sign showing where our existing location is, is right on 723, tells you to take a right to go to the old Barkful School. Can you just email me later, tell me, say, hey, Steve, you know, this is the process to get that sign down? And I, I'm kind of wondering if we could do something to make it, to help the citizens when we move it to the Blackstone area to, to get that reinstalled somewhere else, you know, possible. But the problem is, you got two ways you're going in Blackstone, you know, you got to bypass and then the business side. So I was just wondering, you know, wondering if maybe you could help me with that a little bit?
Yes, we'll take a look at that.
Okay.
The existing sign will be relatively easy.
Easy, yeah, remove, right. I got you. But we appreciate that, though, but anyway, all right.
For increased conspicuity, we may be able to go back with a larger sign and more arrows or we'll take a look.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay.
All right. Good evening.
All right. Thank you, Mr. French. Appreciate it. All right. Let's see, Mr. Easter. Number four, animal control. Do you have something?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would look at your package if you would, just take, look at G4. I wanted the animal control officer to show some of the donations that's been coming in, so you, you know who are these. And you'll see donations on 1213, Nottaway High School. So there's some people in this very room that might have been part of that. And just that, that was for your, and then if you go, keep throwing, keep going, I wanted to share this little, you know, data, 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 data-driven. So if you, if you keep going towards the end, it shows that in a year, 288 animals went through our shelter in 2021. And, well, let me back up, let me back up. 2020 was 304 animals, okay? And a lot of, a lot of folks were saying, hey, that's, that's due to COVID, people got puppies and then they, they let them go and that kind of thing. We really don't know. But it did, it did go down to 288 in 2021. And 2024, 508 animals has gone through the shelter. And some people say that's because of the economy and da, 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 da. I even had some people tell me, say, look, Steve, nowadays, people only take care of the children, why do you think they'll take care of the animals? You know, I don't know. But I do want you to see those numbers, how it's gone in, since 2020, how those numbers are going up, okay? Anyway. And I don't really know the reason. Everything what I just told you is completely speculation.
One thing I know that he went up from, mating.
I won't go on that, but I rang, I said-
That's evident, he does not.
Yeah, right.
I didn't know if you thought that far ahead.
No, I was scared to. All right, but he's right. All right. And Mr. Chairman, if you would, let me, on the Piedmont Health District, the only thing, what I put in there on G5, that said opioid money. We are, I'm, Buddy, Buddy was carrying that, that football for a long time, and he's like, Steve, I don't know about opioid money, it's not my thing. And I understand, but he was really helping with that. And, and so, we have, the CRC has gotten different counties together, and we're trying to come up how we can, the way that thing really works is, you, if, if you get $7,000, $7,881 a year, you can't do a whole lot with that. But if you take that money and put it into another grant, you can get $31,000 a month, but, I mean, a year. But what I'm, what I want to tell you is that Amelia, we're looking at maybe partnering with Amelia, and I, and of course, you guys got to vote on this, you know, maybe with Amelia, Buckingham, not Prince Edward, I was trying to think who the other county was. But anyway, they have a program, different programs that really want us, you know, when people see money, they really start, they start programs. But what I'm leery of, the intention of opioid money is to help people, and, and I get that, you know, and that's what it's there for. Help people who have some type of drug addiction, okay? And get them through, get them some help. The problem is, when that money dries up, you got to continue, so that's going to be part of your budget. Now, you look at the, what the money, it's going to go to 2020, 2039. But anyway, I just want you, I want to share with you, to share that part with you. I do think, and Bill and I had a meeting this recently, and it's a question that we need to ask Liam Walters, we do wonder how many repeat offenders come back to the jail because they have rehab programs at the jail that we can participate. You remember that Bill was talking about? And so, it makes you wonder how many people get out of jail and come back. I, I like to see that, that is a number, and so I asked the jail, could they give us, and they said a Commonwealth attorney probably would help us with that. But I just want you to see that, that money and what we're trying to do with it, and you will be, we will, we'll have to make a decision within about the next 90 days, okay?
Maybe they ought to stay longer the first time.
Right. Well, maybe.
We can get them out and keep them from going to jail, that helps us on the other side.
That's all I have on that, sir. Thank you.
All right. Anybody from the libraries? Nottaway County School Board.
And everybody, and I believe this is the first time I've been before you in the new year, so happy new year.
Happy new year.
Happy new year.
It is, as always, a pleasure to stand before you and to share with you just a little bit about what's going on in our school division. Not much, because we had one break, and then we had a little bit of extension to that break because of the weather. So at last week's school board meeting, I shared with the public information about how we make the determination as to whether to keep schools closed or have a delay. And so I will repeat just a little bit of that. It is not a decision that's made in isolation. It is a decision that is made after serious consideration, and it is taken very seriously. I believe last month when I spoke, I spoke about how important the safety of our students is, and this is one of those things, school buses do not handle the same way as our personal vehicles. And quite frankly, the way some of us drive our personal vehicles, we all not to be out there yet.
That's a truth.
And so we certainly do take those things into consideration, not just the conditions of the road as far as the people who are driving, but also where our kids have to stand to catch the bus, and what happens overnight, and the temperatures when our students are standing at those bus stops, especially with our primary schools being first to open, so those students having to be out earlier. So we have a team of folks who take their responsibilities very seriously. We are on the phone, we are texting, we are debating in order to determine what it is. Because the other really important piece to that is, we also recognize that any decision the school makes about whether to open or when to open also impacts our parents and our families, for those people who have to work and find care for their children when they cannot send them to school for the regular day. I also would like to take a moment just to acknowledge, not only the Virginia Department of Transportation, that has been a strong partner with us since I've been here, and I'm sure before I've been here, as far as communicating about the roads and hotspots and things to look for as we are making decisions about whether to open or close schools, but especially the county's employee, Mr. Hyde. Mr. Hyde is invaluable, and I'm sure you all know that.
Who?
His level of communication, his, including school staff on his calls, members of the emergency team, the weather reports, and the willingness to talk to people individually for questions is, just has been a great resource to us and a part of our decision-making process as we decide what to do for opening schools. So I just wanted to highlight Mr. Hyde for the board this evening. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
This will be the first time we had snow on top of snow in a long time.
Yeah, it is.
It's not over, is it?
No. Well, let's see. Greg, did you have any?
I was going to say happy new year to y'all, but I'm not since Dr. Gruns already did. But it's nice to see you, Chairman, and Vice Chair, and the rest of the board members. I do want to, very quickly, I want to raise the question now as opposed to later, as we get, as we're in the budget season. I think it's been quite a while since we've raised our fees, and I brought several cases before you all where we don't have fees. The 20, the 15.22232 review, we don't charge fees. Comprehensive plan amendments, we don't charge fees. Subdivisions are not major subdivisions, but I consider minor subdivisions. We need to start charging people for that, 50 bucks or whatever. And I'm just proposing that.
So this is like an application fee to make a change to the comprehensive plan?
For the comprehensive plan amendment, yes, that would be in that one case because we had Ms. Ware who came in earlier this year. But when people come in, they just want to cut off a lot. I still need to review it, not a major review, but I figure 50 dollars or something like that for each lot. Major subdivisions, we already have covered, it would be worth, in my opinion, re-reviewing the cost because I don't think, my professional opinion is, I don't think taxpayers should be carrying the load for the developers. They should be paying for their development. And if that's okay with y'all, I'd like to-
That makes sense.
And if that's okay with y'all, I'd like to pursue that.
Have you already, or can you look at some adjacent counties and see what the fees are?
Yes, sir. That's standard to do that. Because we don't, we don't want to outcharge more than our neighbors because I view it from a plan perspective, we're competing with them.
In particular, if it's a commercial situation, if the applicant is going to benefit economically?
Yeah. I, the only thing I charge for with regards to that is just if it's a special exception or something along those lines. But other than that, I don't want to raise, I don't want to hinder develop, commercial development in the county.
Mr. Zodi, if I may ask, is, is it possible for our next work session, if, if the board so chooses, to have your recommendations on what we're currently charging, and what you recommend we moving it up to, and those things that we're not charging, and what you recommend we moving that to? Is it possible to, possible to have that ready? I guess by three weeks, four weeks, something like that for our next?
That will feed into my, my, my response will feed into the next item. But I'll certainly do, I can promise you I will do my best to get you that information.
That's going to be February 13th.
Yes, sir.
So, so the first on agenda, though, we're hoping to get Dominion Powell there, correct?
Correct. That's Dominion.
All right. So this will be the second, okay?
The other thing I have, two, a couple of things, real quickly. I complete the annual reports for our Petco grants. We received two Petco grants over the last three years, I believe. One was for $7,500 and one was for $2,500, and that's being applied to the new shelter. And so I just want to-
Very good.
And then the February agenda that I'll be bringing to y'all, it's going to have Cross Creek Nursery, which I've spoken to y'all about before, about wanting to just remove one of the two duplexes, put it on the private sector. And that's, I'm not going to, I'm not going to take on that, pal. That's between the Planning Commission and the board and applicant. The others also, more importantly, is the Level Up Tower, the new radio tower. And along those lines, it's going across the road, along those lines, I'm taking the 2232 review, which is the legal status of the plan in Virginia State Code. 2232 review, which is the legal status of a plan in Virginia State Code. I'm taking that to the Planning Commission next Tuesday. So we'll have about three items on the agenda for February for the board and the Planning Commission. I'm going to carry those three straight through that week. I just like the efficiency of just moving it forward, moving our business along. Lastly, I do want to, oh, two, two things. I mentioned during our work session, which I should say that was an excellent work session, so thank y'all. I thought it was very productive, and I appreciate, you know, hearing me. I'd mentioned, I wasn't being sarcastic for once, but this is my monthly update from Brunswick. They're amending their solar ordinance again. So, as, I was not kidding, we get updates from them once a month, and they send us one because we're an adjacent county. Lastly, I do want to say that I spoke to my representative with LoopNet, well, co-star, Zach, and I was talking to him, Chair, about our, trying to create a marketing plan. He and I are going to work together to create a marketing brochure for the site. But what really struck me, and he was very complimentary, that we've had 7,000 views in the last 90 days, 7,577 views in the last 90 days. We've had 141 page views in the last 30 days, and over 1,048 people have seen our property, at least 2,000, almost 2,900 times. So, I want to thank the board for affording me this in the economic development budget. I think this is going to, this is going someplace, we're getting eyes on it, and I've had several suggestions from the people who've written me through the LoopNet ad. But I think we could do a lot more with it. I think, I recommend we consider maybe paying more, but also listing some of the property on Fort Barfoot that we...
You can list everything on there.
Okay. And I think we would have to do a separate, you know, billing.
Buy, it's buy different, how many listings you want.
Exactly, but right now...
You can change the grade of the listing. You have basic, and then you have gold.
Right, and I'll talk to Zach on that, but that's all I have for tonight.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Emergency Services, Mr. Hyde.
Just the guy I want to see.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, staff, citizens. Mr. Bowen, just a real quick, your, the packet didn't, the main packet didn't have my report in it, but it is in the second group of papers that Ms. Kelly gave you. So I don't know if you had a chance to really look it over, but if you have any questions, please let me know. Just a couple highlights, or just several highlights. We had a couple meetings this month, December was a busy month with mutual aid, and I'm real thrilled that we were able to pull this off. It's tough to have Amelia, Nottaway, Dinwiddie, Prince Edward, Lunenburg, and Brunswick all come to meetings, to meet with our chiefs, and so we were able to do that in the month of December. On December 19th, we had Prince Edward, Lunenburg, and Brunswick come on a virtual meeting, which was a little bit easier to talk to our chiefs and myself and our GIS contractor to get the GIS maps all in line with what we would do to help each other out. And then we fast forward to this past week, on January, this past, a couple days ago, actually, we met with Amelia and Dinwiddie, and that was a really successful meeting because they came to the EOC, and we had some virtual, that was January 14th, actually. And we had the chiefs at Nottaway there again, and we had all the chiefs and Amelia. So this was something that we've been looking forward to doing, and what we're doing is wrapping that GIS layer up. And the next step in the month of January and February is to get that map layer into our CAD, our computer aided dispatch. And, you know, all the things we've talked about with dispatch, this was in the works over a year ago. We have fast forwarded through all these meetings, we've had multiple meetings, we've had several cuts at this. Everybody seems happy now, and all the chiefs sort of verbally agreed on it the other day. So we're going to put it in the CAD system now, so the dispatchers will have that information. Other things are weather, of course, you heard it, and thank you, Dr. Grimes and Mr. French for the kind words. I enjoy working with both of you and your agencies. We, we had multiple weather calls, as you know, state, national weather, January 3rd, everything started taking off. And between January 3rd and 10th was just a fast forward to multiple things going on, multiple emails, and I know you're the recipients of those. But I just want to thank real quick on the weather, thank VDOT, I was in touch with JR McDaniel a lot, and he had Craig on the night shift, and they did a fabulous job, as Mr. French said. Also, Public Works, I stopped and talked to Dan Marden along the way during the week. Public Works, TJ Shelton, all of those, all the people that had earthmoving equipment and able to put the salt and sand and brine down. Also, talking to Social Services and Robbie Templeton. We were ready, we were ready to open something if we needed to, luckily we didn't have a power outage. And then we also agree, state grants, we had one state grant written on January 3rd, we put in for 15,000. We covered this ESO incident reporting system that the state will no pay for after July. They have paid for it for three years, and now they're pulling out because of that financial situation they had in Richmond. So we're hoping that grants coming in with no match, Mr. Collins, no match on that one. But also, we do have a grant award, and we received a letter on January 2nd that we're receiving 33,581 on emergency medical dispatch. But that is a 50-50 grant, so we'll have to come up with 33,581, plus a little bit of maintenance costs to maintain that system. As you know, Grant will buy it, but you have to maintain it as well. But these are key components, and I won't get into the details, but what I'll have is a full report for the board on exactly what that does, and exactly why we need that, and why it will make us better in Nottaway County. But with that, you know, we met with some other, some other chiefs, as far as the EMS and fire chiefs, and we're ready for budget. We've already had our budget meeting, and we sent the package out today. As soon as Ms. Presley sent them to us, I sent them out to the chiefs. So we're having our individual meetings with all the fire and EMS people, and then we'll come back to you and we'll submit. But with that, that's all I have tonight. Do you have any questions?
When's it going to snow?
I think it's going to snow again this weekend.
Let's hope.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So we're ready again, look for some more emails, hope you don't mind.
All right, Mr. Hyde, if you would, I'm going to throw something at you, it's not that you're not prepared for it, but if you need to say, you need to get the information, feel free to, sir. The, you're talking about getting in budget time. I think it's important for the citizens and this board to know, I mean, the board is aware, I don't want that to be misconstrued, that at some point, we need to implement, and people hold on, y'all hold on, an EMS tax for emergency medical services. What I would like to see, if it's possible, if we could have a projection of when the higher es need to go into the fire departments, Crew, Burkeville, Blackstone, it's coming, it's coming. They've been saying it before you got here, they've been saying it since you've been here, you've been screaming it at the top of your lungs. It would be, it would behoove us to wait till a department is out of volunteers and be at the mercy of a multimillion dollar budget for just that one fire department to put people in there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, I think it's important now, I think everybody in this county understands, nobody wants a tax increase, but there has to be a way to get additional money to these departments, to y'all, so you can move forward towards that. I mean, a million dollars plus, if either one of these departments shut down, is that correct?
Well, that's correct. If you don't have the paid services EMS right now, we're relying on paid service, any of them will tell you that, and if you take that component out, you pretty much don't run. You just have to have the neighbor pick it up. It's a lot of case of neighbors inside the county, but sometimes it's outside that has to come. Fires, fires a little better, they've got more people to pull from, but the call volume is less as well.
Right. Well, I think things get better in certain aspects, but they're not getting better with age, as far as the members involved. There's just not enough young people volunteering. You know, it's asking a lot of them, and there's a lot of video games and chasing girls and learning about life that they want to do instead of...
What do you think would be a good timeline, Mr. Rourke? Do you want to say early May?
Well, the sooner the better, because, you know, the Budget Committee is meeting starting next week, I believe y'all are. And it's, one of the things is, number one, that timeline is going to be critical, because if something shuts down, you can't wait and tax and try, expect a backup for five years. Even if you implement this, and you, and y'all are creating a, for lack of a better term, a nest egg, well, you're going to need it, you're going to need it. I mean, you've got basically during the day sometimes, there's four, maybe five fighter fighters, and the center of crew who is the first response to back up to both of the other departments. And most of the time, it's four to five gentlemen who's all over 65 years old. And I mean, I ain't in good health now, I'm 51, and these guys out here 65 plus fighting fires. We got to do something. So, to your point to the timeline, also a good suggestion, and put it on me, let them throw the stones, I'm fine with it. But when that phone rings, I mean, why are we going to spend $7 million for a radio tower if we ain't got people to answer the calls? You know, so at the end of the day, if you have a recommendation for where we could start with an EMS tax and a timeline, because I believe that any time, I mean, you're talking 65 years old plus. I mean, come on, we got to, we got to treat our volunteers better too, and give them the help that they need. So, anything you can give us for that information, before, possibly even before the public hearing for that budget, I mean, this is something that we can't wait on anymore.
Yes, sir. Well, Mr. Rourke, you didn't catch me off guard, we're already on it.
Right.
But what we needed was direction from the board, and obviously, we can do the research, and we can go as deep as you want us to go. I will tell you, I've already researched this, and I haven't finished. I'm actually finding out who...
Figured you had.
Who has done it. The one we all know about is Prince Edward, we know that. A really good model's Orange, I'm talking to Orange tomorrow, just to get some ideas, because they had both. Now, the state of Virginia allows you to do an EMS and a fire, they're two different codes of Virginia. And so, I talked to Prince Edward, and they only have EMS, but it's not because they didn't try to do fire. So I got that information internally. They get about 360K coming in a year, and then they take 100 contingency off the top to help with ambulances and putting motors in ambulances and buying ambulance and things like that. So you can kind of mold it however you want to, any locality can do this, code of Virginia allows it, and what, but back to your point about nest egg, there's three large moving parts in our business. One is people, like you said, you can't do it without them. Number two is those truck prices, you know, I've been talking about that with you for a couple of years now. This board maybe not, but with the old board, the former board rather, we've been talking about the capital improvement, you know, the trucks are hitting a million dollars quickly. Each one, a million dollars on anything with a large chassis, small chassis, 200, 300,000. Ambulance is almost 500, 400 now. So, the nest egg has to be big enough moving forward. You know, however we do this, and we do this together, obviously, but we need to make sure we don't cut ourselves short. You know, because if you do something like that, and then the third component is the radio system. If we're trying to put any kind of support money with that, we know it's financed, but support money to go along with it. So those are three big pieces. But like you said, with those people, so...
It is changing a whole lot. I think Ben Franklin started to volunteer a fire department. But one thing isn't changing is firemen, and I got the utmost respect for each and every one of them, they bailed me out many times, a few times, is their desires like these new trucks. Old man told me one time, when the Blackstone first got their first ladder truck, he said they got them a $700,000 truck, and the tallest building is two stories.
Yeah, but what he did...
I'm just throwing out there.
Right. What he didn't tell you, because I came from that business, the aerial ladder and all the firefighting, it's the offset, it's how close you can get to the building, so you can take...
Well, I totally understand that.
Three-story building takes a hundred...
But what do they do with them buildings up in New York City?
Yeah, they go as high as they can.
That ain't too high, they have to be from a helicopter.
They can, you can go about eight or nine floors, is about it.
So them 100-foot buildings, they just let them burn, I guess. We got to have people to operate that stuff, but my point, my point is, you're talking about a fire department tax. For a long time, it's worked, the ages have grown, as you said, people don't volunteer like they used to. But them old cats like them new shiny trucks. Because I read something in the paper here just recently, they're talking about getting another million dollar truck, is that right, buddy?
That's right.
And they just got a million dollar truck.
It made the paper this way, that's right.
Just got a million, to get another million dollar truck.
And the capital improvement plan that I put together in '22, and I'll share it with you, because I think you asked about it, it staggers. You mentioned it to me, actually, Mr. Toth, I think, one night, about staggering the purchases. Just for support money, over the next, we've already moved it out 20 years, we've got it running to '42, 2042.
Can you get them a copy of that, buddy? Because I remember you gave the previous board a copy of it. It shows what truck at what station and everything. That's going to be replaced up next.
Yes.
Burkeville's probably got the oldest, most conservative, smallest, because of locality up there, of the other two combined together, as far as the age and stuff. Now, they got the smaller service area, they got a lot smaller, but Burkeville, when the three comes, Burkeville's coming.
That's right.
And their truck, get there, don't run no faster, it holds the same amount of water and it costs a lot less money.
They're all, they're all great, they do a great job, and the truck's just, unfortunately, 20-year life, a lot of times, you know, 20 years is a lot, most people don't have a car 20 years, and you're dealing with obsolescence and parts availability and that type of thing.
But you're also dealing with rain and tear, and a fire truck don't get too much rain and tear.
Yeah.
As a vehicle you drive to and fro work every day.
Right, but it's run hard when it's run.
It is, but you need to come onto the farm, look at some old rain truck that we still got, it's 40 years old.
But we're wearing ambulances out about one every eight years, so that's, the life expectancy on an ambulance at about 450 a pop is about eight years, because we're running to Prince Edward, we're running to Chippingham...
Well, as you said, you got a lot more calls, right?
Lot of calls, lot of miles.
Lot more EMS calls.
Yes, sir, a lot of calls and a lot of miles, but all of it is important, but just remember, staffing, staffing needs, truck needs, and the radio needs, and those are three big ticket items, so let's do this right. And you let me know how deep you want to go on the research, glad to, glad to keep on doing it, as long as you're good with us finding the facts off.
Hey, hey, that's the only way you make objective decisions, is details and information.
Will do. And by the way, all the chiefs you just mentioned, Burkeville, Blackstone, and Crew, as well as Nottaway Emergency, they're, they're working on that capital improvement sheet with me, they have it now, tweaking the numbers, so...
I see Steve over here tweaking too, he's like, oh, Lord, what the hell are you doing?
Mr. Hyde, one of our joining counties has an ambulance subscription, which is voluntary, that you can join January 1st, which prevents you from getting, if you have to get transported, it prevents you from billing. Have you ever seen one of that?
I have, and I'm familiar with it, yeah, I'm familiar with the one next door.
We don't do that here.
I visited it 10 years ago, it's, it's very limited, it's very limited, it's a really nice, it's a really nice approach to the citizen, but it's very limited on the revenue side.
Well, what happened?
Right, and that's the idea behind it.
Sam, could we have Mr. Hyde maybe come to one of our future work sessions? And I agree with Mr. Rourke that we need to be proactive with this, that was one of the topics, I don't know if you went to that session at VACO, but that was one of the topics at one of the sessions I attended, across the board, across the country, across Virginia, is volunteerism. We can't wait for it to happen, we have to be proactive, and it doesn't hurt to get numbers and data, and I'm sure Mr. Hyde...
February 13th, we've got Dominion coming?
No, I didn't say...
Do you want to do March?
Near March, probably March, eight, yeah.
And to that point too, I believe, I want to find out, because I was told in 2020 that you could not name a tax specifically for EMS, and I think that's incorrect. I mean, I think we got a couple of taxes coming, we're probably going to put a name on, but anyway, I'll digress.
That's incorrect, yeah, you're right, Mr. Rourke. I'll send, I'll send all of you tomorrow, the two tax codes, it's one page or each.
That's it.
And it says specifically in there, it has to be used, it has to go into, it has to be separated from other county monies, and it has to be used for maintenance and operations of EMS, and then the other one says maintenance of operations of fire companies.
Okay, and that includes personnel, correct?
It's maintenance and operations, so that's a wide open phrase, but what I'm going to do is call the state and see what's eligible under that.
Yeah, because I want to make sure that it's also moving towards putting some bodies in these stations to give our volunteers some help. Currently, we have a 911, is that on, I think that's on our electricity bill, correct?
Right, and I've got some data on that to send you as well.
That goes to, that goes to, some of it goes to landfill right now.
Right.
And then, 75% of it?
Does that mean we can't move it?
About 187,000 dollars a year. And the other, where the other go, you know right off?
Scattered.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Toth, Mr. Chair, what I was, thank you for Mr. Toth, that was the fourth component, that was dispatch. So, staffing, apparatus, trucks, and dispatch and radio system. So dispatch was the one I didn't mention. Contingency fund can be set up on top of whatever comes in to pull whatever fees we want off of the contingency, to do whatever needs to be done now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. One more thing, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, give me a little leeway here, buddy, you might want to stay there for a second. Chief Welch come up there today, got a building permit, and I read, and I just want to verify with you, buddy, but anyway, he's got a building permit to expand the Burkeville Firehouse, and it's one of, in this expansion, it's going to take the vehicle that county owns, which we evidently own a hazmat truck there. And that is correct, right, buddy? That hazmat truck is, we furnish that and everything, I take it, but anyway.
That's our, that's our truck.
Okay.
We had it in multiple locations, I believe, when it was bought, it stayed out in the parking lot here, and then I think Burkeville took it.
I'm asking the board if y'all make a vote. I'd like to waive those, uh, building permit fee for the fire departments since they're doing it for our, for our benefit.
I'll put that in the form-
It looks like it'll be about $375.
I'll put that in the form of a motion to waive it.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you, buddy.
How old is that hazmat truck, buddy?
It looks like a bread truck.
34 years old.
So that ain't on the list.
Y'all call it a bread truck, don't you, Sheriff?
20.
20 years old?
20.
Is that all? Is that on that list? Don't answer that, buddy.
I don't think so.
Was it a bread?
It will be now.
Was it a bread truck?
Yes.
It looks like it.
No, from what I understand, from what I understand, Mr. Rourke, uh, purchased it when they had an issue with a hazmat, and they said, uh, let's just go ahead and do this. And they bought the truck, and the truck was fully equipped with light package and all, so it was made to be a hazmat truck, right.
And we got a forensic, oh, ambulance out here, don't we, Sheriff?
Yeah.
Does that thing run?
Uh, no.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, buddy.
Thank you, buddy.
I figured that was well over 20 years old.
Yes, sir. The ball went again.
Number 11, Piedmont Regional Jail Authority, got two positive things that's happened here recently. Um, so we were back to taking federal inmates in, and as of yesterday, the revenue is set to start exceeding budget, so it'll be positive. Uh, and what they do with that revenue is they, they don't ask the member counties for capital improvement money, they use federal money for any capital improvements at Piedmont Regional Jail. So that's positive. No further requests from, from the jail for capital improvement. Uh, we've had a letter gone to the legislature from the Department of Behavioral Health.
Right.
VCBR. In, in support of additional funding for the VCBR residents that are prisoners at Piedmont Regional Jail. Um, I believe it was about 295 or 285.
285.
And, uh, that's, that's very positive. That's gonna help us tremendously. That's a couple of pennies, so that's good news. Uh, any LRA?
Uh, no, not, not at this time.
Okay.
So, I think, I think you do have something in your, in your gray folder, can't remember what it is.
Yeah, it's all of them.
Yes.
Okay.
Constitutional officers, Sheriff Jones, anything? Any, any, we've had some snow and things like that. Dispatch been going okay?
Yes, sir. We've been, uh, we've been having issues.
Okay. See anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment, um, the treasurer, since you and I had a discussion today, um, to clarify that with Mr. Colvin, that our collect, tax collection rate now, since they went out and were due December 5th, is at 96.37% collection.
Pretty good. That is wonderful. Going on to unfinished business, Mr. Bowen, some of these things?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and board members. Uh, the animal shelter, um, and I'll let Mr. Ingram kind of handle, we've hit, we've, uh, I've had some, uh, good, good meetings, and now we get into weeds, it gets a little, um, contentious, I guess is the word, we'll be saying, but we're, we're working it out. Um, you, you, what you have on I-1A is a draft of what we are starting to have discussions of, and I, and I want the board, this is a draft, this is a 1A, these are the conversations of what the county is gonna be responsible for, the animal shelter, and what they are offering. And, um, and I'm just sharing that with you, um, and it may look like some things are repetitive, but if you look at the, if, like, the laundry, there's a washer and dryer, um, we're responsible, but it's actually full in there, that, that was a, a lot of these recommendations of, of what's needed in there, is when we, uh, Mike Gentry and myself went to visit Dr. Carr and see the stuff that you, the things that you need, and how, and the, the mistakes they made, and we're not trying to make the same mistakes. So I just wanted to share that with you. If you, if, if you don't have to say anything now, but if you, uh, and if you see, see some of these things, like in kind, there's still, there's still possibility that, um, you know, uh, someone may do all these other things for donations, um, and they are, are very supportive and trying to get more funding. They've talked about possibly, if you looked on the, like, like the, like the animal, um, like for the county, uh, the in, indoor kennels, the cages, and that, that type thing, you know, they, you know, they may help us with some kind of fund, you know, they're not making that promise, that we were, we gotta put those cages in no matter what, okay? But wouldn't it be nice if they could, uh, help, you know, have somebody donate a, a run or something, and then put their, put their name up? And we mentioned that at the last meeting. Um, so that's just an idea, a little, a little list there of, uh, what the things we've talked about, and again, that's a draft.
Have you shared this with cares yet?
Oh, they made, they made this.
This is, this is, yeah, this is communication.
Excellent.
Right, yeah.
That's great. So everybody's getting on the same page and?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Okay. So I, yeah, just want to, I just want to clarify that. Yep.
Okay.
All right, um.
And you might want to know that their $50,000 match was met.
Yes, that's right, Mr. Ingram. You're right.
Very good.
Uh, and so the, uh, goal right now then is to, um, uh, we, we've met with the architect the last time, and for the last time, he's gonna send the, he's gonna send me a, uh, what, what's gonna be bidded out, and we're hoping to put this thing out for bid, uh, second week in February. That's the goal.
Word.
What did I say?
No, I said word.
Any commentary on the landfill?
He don't know, he don't know 80's slang.
No, no, because you do good, I got you. I see your text all the time. Anyway, I would, yeah, that's it.
Anything on landfill?
Uh, no, no, sir. No, sir.
Yeah, Sheriff touched on dispatching, anything else?
Uh, the public radio project, um, I, I did want to say, I, I think, um, buddy, I would like to say this part of it, and, and this, I put the, sometimes I put dots together, takes my brain a little while, waiting to go off. In, in part of the project, they gonna show what that 300 foot tower looks like, like it's gonna be a, I don't know, a fake picture or whatever. Does the planning commission need that? You know, and that would help? I'm just, you know what I'm saying?
On, on the fake picture?
The fake, clean trash.
I believe in these three photographs, uh, directly across the street.
All right.
Distance, and then just oncoming.
Okay.
And I did request that for the planning commission, for this 2232 review, where we review whether or not it's compliant with the comprehensive plan. I'm not requiring that. That, the purpose of that meeting is to decide if the comprehensive plan supports this project, this public project.
Right, right.
We'll have to do this with solar.
Right. And, and I think the, 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 if you go, if you go by the health department, or the EOC, whatever you want, but I call it the health department too, if you go by there, it's flagged where the, where the, um, where the tower's going, I think.
Yes, sir. And you have the, the abandoned or the, uh, old reserves, I think, for this, uh, septic down toward the bottom of the tow road slope.
And we moved that across the street. Originally, that was supposed to be on this side, the prod, you know, with the project, but with the courthouse possible renovation, we decided to put it on the other side of the street. Anyway, because we don't know what's gonna happen back here. Okay?
All right, so IF is committee reports. So any committees that you're on, whether it's, uh, CRC, Crossroads, MEED, like the jail, this is where, going through this year, you guys can make a comment or a report if you want to.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just got a quick question here on one of the committee, uh, reports. I was thinking, uh, I know that there's a, in the very near future trip, trip planned, maybe to go look at some courthouses. Would it, if, if, if the board would agree, do you think we could go ahead and put out an advertisement for the date in case all members, I mean, kind of look at this, the committees will do a lot of the footwork, the in-between stuff, putting our eyes on the courthouse, even if we can't all make it, we can still advertise, and if everybody wants to go-
I think that's how we did it for the school, when we did the school tour, then we advertised.
We, we had to, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I, yeah, I'm fine with that. I know, um, Steve was talking to Buckingham.
Yeah, so Mr. Carter, we, he told me, he said, see what your board wants to do, but, um, if y'all could look at your dates, he's looking at, uh, February 25th.
Is that a Tuesday?
That's a Tuesday, and it's at 10:30. Um, he said that he would, uh, would tour their, their courthouse, uh, would go into a conference room, um, discuss, he's gonna bring people in, discuss, uh, the dues and what they shouldn't have done.
You said February 25th?
No, January.
Wow.
January 25th.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you did say February.
Did I say February?
Is it still a Tuesday?
Wait a minute.
Next Tuesday.
He said it's a Saturday.
Hold on, hold on, big guy.
No, I think it's February 25th.
Mm-mm. No, it's January, but I'll get the date.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I digress.
I've been, not through the whole complex there, but I've been there a few times.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't want to see y'all February, January 25th, I want to see y'all January 28th.
January 28th.
10:30.
So that's a week from Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
Well, the permitting.
We, we, you, you got a truck, right?
Take that.
Okay, I'll just, anyway.
All right, in regards to advertising, that's not-
I think, I think Ms. Kelly said that's okay. Didn't you say, Ms. Kelly? If we do, if we do January 28th?
Yeah, because you need, what, five or seven days, something like that.
All right, well, I will let him know, Mr. Carter, that we're coming to Buckingham.
Are we gonna get, what, Babs Bus, or how we gonna get up a, a school bus?
If Mr. Norby could drive it, that would be great.
Mr. Toth, if you don't mind, let me worry about the small things.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bowen, absolutely. I'm glad you consider that to be small.
I could drive it. I used to drive that bus.
All right, so why, why are we talking about that? We need, and I apologize for that, but-
You don't apologize for that. I thought-
I, I left out Mr. Woodson Erby. He's, he came by the office yest- yesterday, and he, when he tells you, hey, man, you might want to go, because I don't mind, I don't look at a clock, he don't look at a clock. And, uh, but we went over some things, and he's, and he's, and he's part of that, what we call it, the, um-
Courthouse.
Courthouse Committee?
No, no, we call it-
Courthouse Revitalization.
Revitalization Committee.
That's what we call it.
That's what we call it. So anyway, so he's part of our group, and Jane Brown is, and, uh, and Sheriff Jones, and, and, and I, I don't expect Jane wants to go with us, but I'd like, uh, Mr. Erby to go with us, and I'm hoping the sheriff can kind of head down with us that day.
Ride with the sheriff, blue lights and sirens all the way.
He got a four wheel drive, don't he?
John, Mr. Bowen's gonna take care of them small things. Don't you worry about riding your chair. He might want me to break the sleigh and the horse up out.
Committee reports, this is where you'll speak about anything in your regional committees, okay? Uh, Steve, I-2, SEDS committee appointment?
Um, I-2, oh yeah, gotcha. So Phil, Phil Miskovic, the, the town manager of Crew, um, has, has volunteered to help with that committee, and, uh, I haven't spoke to him about it at all, but, you know, he's, he's willing always to help. I'd like to add Greg Zody on that committee. And so I'd like to, if we could, anyway, surprise, surprise, surprise. I'd like to get a motion to get them two on the committee, but I'm still, I'm still short on one part of business owner, but-
Do we need to, did you want to do the court, motions on courthouse?
Yeah, I would do, yeah, yes, sir. That would be, that would be great, if you could back up to that and then do this committee, I mean, add this to the CEDS committee.
So the intention of the, the county is to comply with the judge's order, and as part of that, we formed a committee, the courthouse revitalization committee, made up of Steve Bowen, John Rourke, no, Dicky, I'm sorry, not John, Dicky, Mr. Toth, Mr. Woodson Erby, and Ms. Jane Brown. You have a motion?
And Sheriff.
And Sheriff Jones.
Sheriff Jones.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the, the judge's order, we're, we're moving on, Judge, we're-
That's a, that's the first step.
Mr. Chairman, can we, can, also, on that, on that trip up there, can we see about possibly adding apparatus to that? Because I know-
It'd be nice to do it the same day, and that's gonna be the most feasible.
I, I, I'll work on that. I'll, I'll call, uh, Ms. Adams, I think is the county administrator up there, and, and, um, and Mr. John, Mr. Ronnie Rourke's son, Johnny's, uh, up there too, so I'll see if I can get that together.
For the same day?
It'll be probably like, um-
Efficient?
Yeah, we eat, after we eat, then maybe 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, okay? Y'all should make a day and knock it out?
Or even 4 o'clock, you know, maybe.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
All right, I will work on that.
We have the, what's this acronym stand for, SEDS?
I knew, don't ask that when I don't know the answer. Let me look, I, I can't remember, it came from-
This is through CRC, Commonwealth Regional Council.
It's, it's, it's about economic development.
Economic Development Committee Appointment.
Right.
I'd like a motion to add Phil Miskovic and Greg Zody to the SEDS committee, sponsored by CRC.
So move.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, thank, thank you, Greg, for your volunteer.
Mr. Chairman, I'd go back, I like to go back to one thing on the unfinished business.
Yes.
I want to let everybody know, I did see a River Street vehicle in the county.
Mm-hmm. I saw one too.
Want everybody to know that.
They've got an ad, they've got an ad on the Bobcat, it directs people to the website.
Right, don't, don't, don't get, what's the, fired up like that now? Right, don't, don't, don't get, what's the, fire it up like that now?
Did you take a picture of it, Steve?
No, it wasn't 7/23, it was somewhere else. But I saw it.
Was it going to Denver?
My wife said, "What's River Street?" I said, "Do what?"
Alright, new business, section J, BZA vacancy recommendation, Mr. Zody.
Thank you. Um, that's, this is Mr. Norton, Roger Norton, who resigned, I believe, it was earlier this year. And so we needed a BZA representative, and I don't believe state code requires it to be one from each district, so, but he was district one.
We have talked to Mr. Greg Wolvan, and he's willing to, to serve, lives in the town of Berkville.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll give you his contacts, but the board needs to vote on that.
I'll make a motion, we appoint Mr. Greg Wolvan to the...
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you all very much for that, so I can get, because I have a meeting in March, and I do want to say it's the comprehensive economics development strategy. That's what SEDS stands for.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, this was discussed a little bit earlier in the meeting, J2, office relocation, rent allocation. So this is a reallocation in the existing budget, we're going to move some unspent funds to cover the rent down in Blackstone for the treasurer, the electoral board, and commissioner of revenue.
Mr. Chairman, Logan, Logan Presley and I, we met and had, had some discussion on how we can get these funds, and we've got two line items. I'm looking for $22,500 to pay the rent up to the remainder of this fiscal year. Line item 43020-7002, that is capital outlay, it was $13,805 there. That $13,805 was for another Sally Port here on the complex, we're not going to do that. It may be in a way, and, and I talked to the judge, and he's okay with not me billing that. So that remains, I need to pull $8,695 from another line item. We have $70,000 under capital outlay, again, that was for assistance with getting the, I was going to replace some carpet over there in one of the buildings, and then I was going to do some mold remediation. Now that I'm moving the treasurer out, I'm going to put that off right now, and that's line item 430207003, and that's for $8,695. Of course, you always got to check a Steve Bowen math, Mr. Toth, $13,805 plus $8,695 should be $22,500, okay?
Okay.
So if y'all will give me permission to move those line items and keep it within the budget, I appreciate it, because we need to pay, we got to pay rent here shortly.
I'll make a motion for you to be able to move those line items to take care of the rent of the former BBNT building for the three offices that we wish to locate there.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, funds are allocated, you may move on.
And just for public knowledge, they, the, the rent that's being paid from the tax dollars going to that building, they're providing the electricity to that building for that rent, correct?
Yes, sir, that's part of it.
Utilities.
That's a, that's a...
Except internet.
Except internet, that's right.
Kind of a good trade.
Yes, very good.
It was a very good deal for the county.
Especially if it can be just a short fix.
Yeah, to suit our purposes with having to start working out here, so...
And the mold issue, part of that money is going to be saved from us not having to treat that no more.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping, I don't, you know...
Still got to solve it.
Right.
We got to solve it, but as far as immediate...
Right.
Health infraction, it's not going to be that.
Correct. We got to still solve that moisture problem.
And I got a moisture problem at the, at the, at the EOC as well, so, we've got some ideas, we're working on it.
We may end up treating it by pushing the building over.
That's a good, that could be a possibility.
That would take care of it.
A possibility.
Alright, number J3, Ram Event Allocation, $2,500, Justine Young, I don't believe this was budgeted.
No, Ms. Young came to the board, I know Ms. Norton knows Ms. Young well, I don't know, because anyway...
Yes, this, well, she came to the board, but this is a program that happens every year and alternates the location. Notaway may very well be one of the locations, but they have a multitude of doctors and nurses that come, and they have hundreds and hundreds of people that are senior citizens that do not have medical care come to this event. And it's an all-day event, that they give them medical care, they give them medications, they help these people that don't usually get to go to doctors. They come from all of the PSR region, I think it's 10 counties. I think we can find $2,500, I mean, because Notaway County is one of the highest users of PSR services, and we do have the highest poverty rate, other than the state, we, our poverty rate is 19%, and a large part of those are senior citizens. I don't think $2,500 is too much to ask, to help fund an event with someone's help.
My question is, is we turned down all local departments last year for funds and local people, extra money, we turned everybody down.
Well, these are local people that are going to go to this.
I think, I think one of the ones we, I know they were counseling, and you and I got to meet with them next week, because they were looking, they were looking for some release funds to them, that we didn't, we cut that budget, we cut it completely, that was the Veterans Council. So they want to meet with us next week too. But anyway, just so you know, I think they were requesting $5,000, we didn't give them anything. I mean, y'all told me to cut, and I was cutting, anyway. But I mean, I see Ms. Norton's point, and, but it's, but it's up to, it's up to the board.
It's a pleasure of the board.
Can you find the $2,500 somewhere, Steve?
I tell you where I'm going to go to, I've already robbed y'all once from that discretionary fund, you get $10,000, I robbed it from the, for the library, because I took, I cut her too much, and y'all pulled me out to, you remember that? If you don't remember, forget about it, which is good. But you, you still probably got $8,000, $7,000, some odd dollars there, you probably still got something, I know you got something there, we haven't touched on it.
The reason you mentioned the veterans is, is we opened a tap, is what you're worried about? Open it, open it up?
Well, you know, I, Jim Hoag is going, is coming to the office on, on the 22nd, I don't, you know, I, I guess we need to learn what they do, and, you know, and they, and they did come to the board, I don't know, I think she didn't make it, and then he had to fill in for it, y'all remember something like that?
Yes.
One of those times, Bo won't there. And, and we just cut, I mean, we cut everybody, I mean, we did, and we cut, I mean, a lot of our department head stuff, it was almost $200,000.
Alright, let me ask this, this, because my first four years on here, I served at PSR, and they're invaluable for the turnaround on the dollar. This additional $2,500, how, how quick do they need, because the only reason why I'm asking is, can we get a rundown on the return on this? Because I know they got a wonderful return with every penny we've ever given them.
I can, I can ask Ms. Young.
And is, is, if we put this on the unfinished business for next month, is that...
I think they need the funds by March, so...
They could do it.
The events actually, March 29th and 30th, so if we can get them an answer, it's by February.
They've asked all...
All district, all areas, every county, and I know almost, well, all of them so far have said yes.
And Ms. Norton, this is not, this is separate from PSR, right?
Well, it's, it's one of the functions of PSR, but it is separate entity, but PSR participates.
Right.
Ms. Norton, what did you say in relation to the 19% poverty, I didn't catch it. 19% of...
Notaway County's poverty rate is 19%, the state average is 10%, but the majority of the poverty rate, a lot of them are the elderly.
Oh, okay.
And that's, when you're talking about medical care, and it, and I love animals, don't get me wrong, I know people are going to hatch my head for this, but I've got in this packet sitting in front of me, we've got to buy a washing machine and a dryer and all this for the cares, for the animals, and we can't help somebody get some medicine that's going to save their life.
And Ms. Norton, I agree with you 100%, let them throw the rocks at me too.
So, $2,500 is not much to add.
Mr. Bowen has located a source of funds.
I sure wanted y'all to save that money in case I got in trouble, but I think that's over with.
You'll need a motion.
I make a motion that the board allocate $2,500 to the Ram Event.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
From discretionary fund, right?
Yes.
Thank you, John.
So we're not going to kick, we're not going to kick the can until next month, we just did it.
That's right.
Alright, J4, we already did, that was Citizen Department to the Courthouse Revitalization Committee, so we've established that committee, so we move on, get into your consent items.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the recommendations to, on the consent items, pay the bills.
Okay, we can, you said make a motion, correct?
Yes, sir.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I would like to have a discussion with Mr. Bowen, I guess Mr. Rourke, I don't know if you guys have ever talked about it. So we talked about the landfill, we know that there's fixed costs out there, and if you get on to page 43, Caterpillar Financial Services, what kind of negotiating, and these are leases, I believe, I don't think they own them, is there any savings to be had there, you think?
Well...
Page 43 in consent.
I'm not, I know, I, I had a discussion with Gary, and I can't, to make a landfill work, you got to have four pieces of equipment. We rent three out of the four, because, and, and if you have standards of negotiations, no, I've never negotiated with anybody with the rental that.
There's eight, there's eight line items here, 4,000, 7,000, 4,000, 8,000, 9,000, 4,000, 8,000, 5,000.
And it's, some of that equipment is 150, 160,000, I don't know, you know, like Buddy said, he was talking about fire trucks.
And these are, and this is monthly service, I mean, monthly cost?
Well, let me look at it, get deeper.
This is October and November.
Well, they got a line item listed as repairs, equipment repairs, I don't see that they got on here leasing, the word lease somewhere.
Well, it says repairs and...
Repairs and maintenance, that's what it is.
And to your question there, Mr. Collins, Mr. Chairman, the, I'll, I'll say this, it's going to be cheaper to go to a transfer station, I've never said it before, but you won't have to pay these leases, where you got three or four pieces of equipment, you going to only have to have maybe two.
Like a loader and a...
That's it, pretty much. A loader and, I mean, everything's going to be...
You still have to do some maintenance up on the hill, I don't know what's that...
Well, we, that would be something you could probably lease out and work it at one time, let them take the equipment back.
The, the, I think, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think the pieces of equipment, I can bring Gary to the meeting, but, and I'm going by memory, there's one piece of equipment that we own that just goes over the trash and knocks it down.
It's a compact.
It's a compact, okay. And as a regular dozer, that, and you got one with a backhoe, that you got to dig, and like if you get dead cows or something, you got to dig down in there, and then you...
We're leasing that.
We're leasing that, yes, sir.
That's correct.
That's right. And not only about a cow, if, if you, if you got leech that's coming out on the side, he's got to go in there and dig out and make that leech go towards the membrane, alright, so that's one piece of equipment, then, and the dozers to take the trash and push it and push dirt back in.
And how many dozers is out there that we lease? More than one?
He, what he meant to say was four different pieces, and one of them's got a bucket, that you got to bring dirt, he has to bring, he has to go bring dirt from another place to put dirt on, so basically what you do is you pack your trash, you put dirt, you pack the trash, you put dirt, and then, and then you got to sometimes dig out, because you've got leech coming back out. So that's, so it's really four major pieces of equipment he's dealing, and we only own one. And, and the reason why we started renting, because we didn't want to buy it.
Well, not on top of that, if you're renting it and it major breakdown, Steve, they would take care of it.
That's why, I don't, this seems like this should be the lease fees if it's not...
I agree, because otherwise the repair fee should be lower than that.
We just got to find out what was repaired.
So, it says, it says repairs and something in this line, I just got these large figures, but if these are leases, then there shouldn't be repairs, it should be under lease.
I had to find out how they got it labeled, and I, I can give you something, I'll give you a statement.
That's a big number.
Oh, yeah.
Checking to see if the allocation is correct and needs to be in another place.
I would make a guess at saying, where it says customer number, that would be the lease, count number would be the repairs and, and material supply.
But we can...
But then if you go to any, the rest of them says customer number two for the smaller amounts, so no, maybe not necessarily true.
We, we can give you, we'll, we'll give you an idea, I mean, I can send you an email to explain each line item on that, but, and, and if you want to, like, if you want, if you're okay in the future, if y'all see that before, give, give it to them before the meeting, and I can send it to you, so you can, you know.
Oh, but wait a minute, one of these figures in, in the study?
Say it again, which study?
All these figures were in the study that...
Recorded August the 23rd?
Well, we, it was talked about in February here, where the gentleman came forward, but he still ain't gave us the actual numbers of the big savings.
Yeah, he, so he's, he's supposed to, I mean, I ain't got, I don't know when he's going to finish, and I've called him, and he's called me back, and he realizes what he needs to do. He want, you want extra numbers, and he's going to have to give you those numbers, guys, so I'm, and that's not...
Is he the only person in business to do that?
No, well, that's who's we got a contract with, and we extended his contract, so when we do these engineering things, he's, it's not in the contract, so this is more money, I'm just letting you know. So, what, what he's doing is, he's got to figure out if we, if we keep, it's going to give you an option, if you go to what you were talking about, John, what are you calling the...
Transfer station.
Transfer stations, and he's going to give you an option, if we keep, if we keep our landfill now, what you need to do, like, and, and then, and give you more exact cost, so you know what we...
And if we get clean trash and accept it here, what it might be, he was supposed to do three or four different...
Right, right, and he real, he realizes that, I didn't have conversations with, but I, but I can't, I mean, I'm pushing, pushing, but anyway, I'll try to get it done.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question also on the sheriff's budget, maybe Sheriff Jones can answer, just for informational purposes. There are over $5,000 worth of charges in November for Parker Oil Company, but it's listed as vehicle repairs and maintenance. Parker Oil is a fuel company, why is it vehicle...
Well, we budgeted in our vehicle, it's the gas for the vehicle, we fill up the tank full by the time...
So that's gas, not vehicle repairs and maintenance, it's, it's gas.
And some of that... Parker Oil, I think, and, and every, every department utilizes that tank, right, Sheriff? So...
Oh, so that's not just, that's not just the sheriff's...
That should be fuel charge, yeah.
So...
Department is using it, so it should be fuel.
Yeah, animal control, building inspector, all their charges.
Right.
Okay. But you're not, the reason I'm questioning, you're not getting a true vehicle repairs number, you're not being able to track how much fuel cost you have versus what you're ordering.
Because it's not in the right...
Because it's not in the right spot.
We could always ask them in their next request to have that separated, and that's to make that.
Yeah, what page are you on?
15.
Yes, see, page, page 44 says Parker Oil and vehicle fuel, so...
Yep.
We might be talking about something different, see, look at page 44.
That's the landfill, huh?
No, is it?
Yeah, that's the landfill, but this sheriff's budget. But what I'm saying is that if it's vehicle repairs, then it shouldn't have fuel purchases.
Sometimes the description, the, the numbers, we got to look at, Ms. Norton, in that Bright system, sometimes the description will throw you off, but the, we got it, that's why I said, we got to go back and look at the, if it's in the right number in the Bright system, but anyway, but anyway.
That just helps the finance committee make sure that they budget.
Logan and them very much realize the descriptions are not up to par, and we, we, because I, I have to call them all the time, and they better, let me see the budget, because I don't understand, the description will throw you off.
Mr. Rourke, you were going to ask, do we bid?
About the what, I'm sorry?
You, you, did you, do we bid? Do we all, is it competitive for the fuel for the year?
Yeah, in, any of these things where it's revolving, because it kind of goes back to me to insurance.
Shopping.
You know, anything that's contracted out, period, we, I just, I've always felt like it's better, even if you do two years or three years, but still, you got other time for, to work in competitive...
You talking about locking the price in for the fuel?
Anything, I'm talking about, this rung that bell for me, you know, seeing that. They, I mean, clearly if they're the cheapest, they're the cheapest, but what I'm saying, we're talking, we're talking tax dollars here.
But some, let me back up, hold on for a minute, I'm not sure, but Sheriff, you butted in, because I'm learning, because I know how my propane tank works. If they own that tank, if they, if they own the pump, we got to go through Parker Oil, but I don't know what, do we own it, Sheriff, or do they own it?
They own it.
Alright, see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, and that's, and that's fine.
Right, right.
Like I said, this...
Repair, they keep all the repairs, they keep, you call them, they repair the hose and repair it leaks, they keep it up.
Yeah, and I, and I mean, that, I, I think before, I mean, when I first got here, they, they've always said that they, they've always done good, but we're talking about these little things that get left undone. I'm not talking about something so much major like this, because, I mean, most places going to be competitive within a range, anyway, I'm talking about insurance, this is, that's just one of those things, you got to put a finger on, because y'all are getting ready to do a budget. Can we get cheaper pest control? Can we get cheaper insurance? You know, what can we get cheaper on this reoccurring money?
Right.
So...
What, what you're doing is, what, what we did, we did the low hanging fruit of stop the bleeding, you, you're asking to go deeper and stop the bleeding.
Let's get all up in the weeds.
Up in the weeds. Right, I get you.
We had, section L correspondence information items, DRC, items of interest, change of command, I think y'all have an invitation to that. Mr. Bowen, did we receive a timber contract with the recommendation?
Need to. Uh, yes, sir, we did receive, and we need to go in closed session, discuss.
Alright, I skipped K2 refund requests, is that something we need to vote on?
Yes.
Yes.
No, 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 we already did.
You did whole, I think you did whole consent count.
We did the whole consent.
Okay, so that covers that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, closed session on that. We had Mr. Boswell had a letter, I think that's been addressed.
Dominion Energy, this is something new, instead of, because going with Mr. Rourke just mentioned, Ms. Andrea says, why, why print all those papers and waste it? So if you want to see those notices, this, this takes up space, you're welcome to come to, to come on in and county administrators and, and sit down in a chair and read them. But anyway, that's an example, John, we're trying to cut back on that.
Oh, yeah.
Can we let the public know about backing up to the timber contract with Brandon Martin?
No, that's going to be closed session.
That's closed session.
We do have a...
We do have a...
That was, that was the amendment I asked for closed session.
Alright, do we want to do county administrator...
Yeah, and I, most of it, I already talked about, you know, the op, you already mentioned that to you, we'd already talked about the courthouse, and I'm glad we got that date straight, January 28th, and I don't, y'all been in the parking lot in February 20th, I reckon. Big, my big goal this next couple of weeks is to get that, that the vote, the commissioner of revenue and the treasurer moved. We had our, had some problems with, went down there today, didn't have any heat working, so was trying to figure that out, I didn't want the pipes to break. They are, they are doing construction in there, they almost got the, they almost got the, the vault cleaned out for the voter's registration. I'm will probably have to do some type of cleaning before we go in now, I mean, I know they're going to do, I call it's a construction clean, then there's a deep cleaning, but I'll, I'll, I'll take care of that. I'm, I'm actually not contract that, I'm going to utilize LRA staff to do that. The, I, I need to remind y'all, the statement of economic interest is due February 1st. We, Ms. Norton asked me to set up appointments with delegate Lee Ware and Senator Mulchey, Mulchi, Mulkey? I was, I, I'm going to, I'm going to store it, I'm going to store that name, I'm going to let somebody else talk. But anyway, we got a appointment set up, Ms. Norton, one's at 9:30, I think that was 10:30, 10 o'clock, I got that, got that written in the office. I think Ms. Norton is going, and, and Mr. Collins, is that right? And I don't know if anybody, John, you had talked about it, but you said you won't show it?
Yeah, it's my intent to go, yeah.
Your, your intention is to go? So, the budget request had, had went out this week, and planning on to get that back from tomorrow to department heads, and then the finance committee meeting, the first meeting is January 22nd, and I think that's about right, that's, oh, duh, 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 duh. Town of Crew, I purchased the downtown revitalization planning, is a public hearing February 10th and March 10th. I don't know if anybody, y'all going to go to that, but, but somebody probably needs to, to participate. And, and of course, I did, I worked on the site visits, and I'm going to work on getting apomatics in, in the same day, per, per y'all request. That's pretty much it, we went over most of the stuff during the whole project, for, to the whole meeting.
Steve, I'm, I'm having a, one of those moments, I don't know if it's age or what, but it was something right before the end of the year, you and I was talking about, and I don't know if it's age or what, but it was something, uh, right before the end of the year, you and I was talking about, and it was about, um, involving Ms. Hudson. And I'm trying to remember what it was. I know, I think you were doing some digging with Christie about, uh, I'm trying to remember what it was. I'm sitting there going, it's like total moment.
Yeah, um, the, the, the one thing that Christie is working on, um, and that might been it, but one thing is Christie is working on is what y'all mentioned today. That, 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 you know, I'm just, I'm just going to, I'm not saying that it's going to happen, but I am going to introduce you to that, that E M T, what is it, E M T tax or whatever. So, is, anyway, uh, EMS, E M T tax. I'll just give you example, I got 35 acres in, in Prince Edward, evidently I got more than Prince Edward, but my mom and dad left me 35 acres deep in Prince Edward. I can't remember what the, I don't remember exactly what the, uh, real estate tax was, but I do remember that other tax. It was $7, and I don't have a dwelling on it, it's just, it's just open land. It was $7.80. Because I went, where in the world is that? And that's that tax that Prince Edward has for.
For paid firefighters.
For paid firefighters, that's right. Anyway, so Christie is giving some numbers together, so you can at least take, take a look at that because we knew that you had mentioned that before too, Mr. Rourke. And, um, and so, but anyway, but, but it's very clear in the code that that is earmarked for E M T, EMS. Right, okay.
It can't move around.
And you, are you familiar with it too, Catherine, on that tax?
Um, I'm not as familiar with that.
Right.
You do know that that exists.
Okay, but anyway.
Clearly, everybody would know that if something like that gets implemented, it is for their health, safety and welfare, a number one priority, and that's only what it's for.
And the law of average is each one of us, one day is going to need them.
Exactly.
Excuse, I mean, you're right.
Already had it happen. I bought it years and twice.
And me too, maybe three.
Several times.
The Vice Chairman Norton, any comments?
Just look forward to a new year. We all got our feet wet, so now we're ready to roll. And y'all probably know that Mr. Collins and I met with Mr. Colvin today and did a live interview. So if you get a chance, watch that. Kind of like the state of the county kind of thing, what we've got going on forward. I look forward to working with all of you this coming year.
Supervisor Ingram.
Administrator Bowen and I had a real good meeting with the mayor of Berkville and Mr. Wolvan. He's helping out the town. They're in a situation now where they do not have a town clerk. So the mayor's having to stay there and, and, and Mr. Wolvan's got to stay in the office and collect taxes and water bills, et cetera, et cetera. So they're working on hiring somebody to be their clerk, but right now they do not have one. They talked to us about several things. One of the things was the loss of revenue that they've incurred, especially on water, like when the school closed. Berkville lost a lot of revenue from water. They also have lost revenue since that, uh, where the Berkville Vineyard used to be, that's shut down. So they've lost revenue on that also. So they're in a, they're in a revenue situation where they need, you know, to generate some, some income. And so we talked about possible things that they could do as far as economic development. Hopefully they'll be able to find some folks that will want, want to locate there. They are, they're working hard. It was good to meet with them and talk to them about their needs and how they're trying to encourage economic development. On the animal shelter part, I'm very, I'm very pleased with how it's going now. I think CARES group has, y'all all saw the proposal that they gave. They are really excited about getting this thing going. And I think it's going to be good for everybody and, and wanting to make it very visible and very attractive for people driving by on 360, 460, because it goes right by there. And hopefully people want to stop in and then that will help Berkville also. So that's two things I'm, I'm, uh, real encouraged about. I've enjoyed working on this board. I don't know how many, you know, how many times I've had people talk to me and say things to me about different things, but I encourage people to get in, you know, get in touch with your board member and, and talk to them and, uh, you know. I may not be able to answer all their questions, but I'll try to find out for them.
Supervisor Rourke.
Yes, sir, okay, all right, so I was thinking, and that's dangerous, we all know that.
I thought I smelled some burner.
It was, it was. And that ain't the wise on here. It's, it's the cross members up top.
Okay.
All right, so guys, as y'all know, this is moving fast. I want you to think about something. It seemed like so long ago when we sat here and said, in five months, we're in a public hearing to do a budget. Guess what? In four months now, you're doing a public budget. All right, so thinking about what's going to happen in, potentially in three years. Turnover, board members maybe decide not to run again. I think it may be incumbent upon us to seriously consider, seriously consider the construction that needs to be done. Possible transfer station, courthouse, anything up here at this complex, getting it done in the next three years. We don't want anything to possibly come in here and stop that progress because it's only going to make it more expensive. To that, I'm not a financial whiz, and anyway, I can tell you one plus one equals two, that's as far as it goes. Just like I know nothing about law, even though I'm sitting in a courthouse now. Does it make sense? And I'm just asking questions for us to ponder, to get one loan and knock all of this out and get this done within our three years. Because part of, I know it seems like we may be dumping a lot on staff, but really, as these projects move on, you've got your inspectors and all that. This shouldn't be so burdensome on the county staff, and we should make sure that that doesn't happen to them. But I think also, we would know what our debt service would be for the next 20, 30 years. You know, with all these projects, if we can, if that's a possibility, and I know we just borrowed the $7 million for the radio system, but is that something we can go back and look at and possibly incorporate all of it?
Yes, we, we set it up, we set it up so that we could pay it off.
Right.
Whether with new financing or with sources of cash. There's, there's one problem that I'm, I don't like, but they did it anyway. So equipment is not amateurized as long as real estate.
That's right.
So you should only amateurize it for, you know, the lifespan of the radio is 14 or 15 years. So you should really only amateurize it for 14 or 15 years. Right now, it's on a 20-year amortization. A lot of the courthouse stuff is 30 years. And I think, I've seen some 40-year stuff.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't want to stretch the radio out that far. Now, you may not, the reason they did it is because of our cash flow.
Right.
They said, well, this is where you need to be, and this is what we'll approve. The choice wasn't made. So we can certainly have that discussion, that's the only thing that I don't like about it.
Yeah, and I mean, I know it looks like you're rushing, but I mean, just let's, let's visualize this for a second, take it in. It's kind of like looking at the stars, it's like, man. But at the end of the day.
It's about $28.6 million.
But if you look at everything and think, can this be done in three years? It absolutely can, when we work with contractors.
If the courthouse was 20, 20 million.
Yeah.
I don't think it'll cost nowhere near that kind of money. I hope, I hope it's, don't.
I don't think so.
You think it's going to be more?
I think 10 to 15.
I, I asked a gentleman, I asked a gentleman in his room, you know, I asked a gentleman today, I stayed, I said, what's your goal? He said, I like to see it, we need to figure out how we get it from 20 million to 10 million. And I like that goal, that's a good goal.
I think that's a great goal.
That's a good goal.
What's scary to me is what happened with the animal shelter.
That's what the SEB goes by.
The, the first quote was 1.7 billion, I think, and then we got into COVID and it went to 4.8. Then they got it back to 3.8. Blackstone's had challenging numbers with this armory that, you know, started at two and a half, and they're pushing five and a half now. So it's a scary time to do construction.
But it's even more of a reason why I feel like if we decide this is what we're going to do and get this done, that can't no longer kick, that all of this is taken care of.
Everybody's taken care of.
One thing that Mr. Rourke asked me to research, and I have a, we have a, I've got a conference call tomorrow with Davenport, and you asked me, and I need to figure that out, you know, what is our ceiling? You know, like, what is our, what's our maximum that we can, I, I hope we never go to a max, but I guess there's got to be a limit somewhere for the, of a county, you know, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure with that.
I think it's supposed to be about 10% of our total.
Right, right.
Taxable value.
Just, that's a good question.
Referring to the assessed value of the real estate.
Yeah.
Right. Supervisor Booth.
Well, I'm looking forward to this upcoming year and the budget and, and the, um, I've had a few citizens in, in my district get involved with the community, and I was mighty glad to see that. If it's simply asking a question or making a statement, because I, I learned, I try to learn something every day. I hope I learned at that court, where did that $20 million figure come up for the courthouse?
Had just a, just a number.
Oh, hypothetical.
Just a number.
I, I think it was 500, I don't, I'm not sure, there, there is a code about how, how you're supposed to build a courthouse, but I think, I think the going rate is somewhere between, Cummins told me this, and I've heard this from somebody who's very familiar with construction, that it's, the, the prices right now are somewhere like $500 per square foot.
Of new construction.
Right, right, right.
$500 per square foot, but you can build a house for about $150, $200 per square foot?
They're running about two.
Something that you stand in.
I think it's more than $150.
They're running about two, they're running about 212.
Two, 212 against 500, what's the difference? Ceiling's higher? Or because I'm doing government work, I can charge them more?
Yeah.
Probably when we.
Architects.
I used to ride with a veterinarian, he's dead gone now. Used to go to State Farm, home by the state of Virginia, preg check cows in Goochlin once a month. He said he never forgot who paid that bill. When he backed his Mercedes to the door and popped the trunk, that's what he drove. He said he never forgot who paid that bill. Same thing with building the house and building the courthouse, you know they're going to hose you down.
But we've got, we've got a great committee, Bo, we've got you, common sense. We've got Dicky doing historic, we've got Mr. Woodson Erby out here, great contract, former contractor, read a contract. Jane Brown knows how to, how to flow the courthouse. Sheriff Jones on security, he under, he's very understanding of what our situation is in this county. So you guys, you drive it, man.
Then Steve.
I'm going to drive it to 10 instead of 20.
Then Steve born the brains.
It can easily be done.
Eight point.
Well, Steve Bones the brains.
Brains, so, um, but, but.
He worries about the little stuff. I worry about the big stuff, you leave it to me.
All right, Bo, but let me say this, because you just made a, he did make a valid point. And we talked about in this, this in the CARES group meeting.
Yes.
The more we talk about what's, what's budgeted for something, contractors watch that.
That's right.
They read, okay, okay. Because I asked.
Watch what's budgeted, what, what, and they, they're competing, they're supposed to compete against one another.
Right.
But they got a whole deal of competition just amongst themselves that the general contractor don't have.
Right.
Well, I know, I do know, I can't remember which one of y'all I talked to, maybe two, three, or I talked to about this. I wanted to know if there was a way, and I'm not trying to keep anything from the public, I'm trying to save the public money.
Right.
Our documentation, can it be working papers until the bids are open? For that exact reason Steve just mentioned.
I don't know that.
I mean, simply because if you start throwing out figures, whether it's someone on social media, I heard, blah, 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 because we know they're always correct.
Right.
But, um, at the end of the day, can it be for the protection of our citizen and to keep their tax dollar lower? Someone's desperate need to know, to gossip about it, it's not the best interest of saving these taxpayers' money. Can we leave it as working papers until the bids are open?
Well, I, I, since it's my closing statement, Steve, uh, I want to say this. I had a little reading and, and a little bit of, of help to say that what could help us service some debt, such as the, the communications in the courthouse. Mr. Ingram. Could be solar. Now, when I say that, I'm talking about directly, that you can go to a lender and say, we've got these solar panels, a, a site plan in place, and we're getting this amount of income per this contract, and show it to our lender. And also perhaps, this would be a good Dominion question, I don't want to put the horse before the cart, but I think they can lend us some direct funds to help us and pay themselves back like with, with, with site plan fees and save us a lot of interest.
It's worth the talk.
It's very worth the talk. Having said that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to yield to yourself and to the administrator.
Okay. As Ms. Norton said, we did have a nice visit with Mr. Colvin today, and it was really about all of our revenue and the expense. And, and the conversation has changed amongst our citizens because of the judge's order for this courthouse. So it's worth, it's about 40 minutes, if, if you're bored, you can sit and listen, but it was some of the same material. On the courthouse, I did send an email to the C R C, Dicky's our rep there.
Yep.
Our citizen, Mr. Chris Page, brought to my attention a USDA facilities grant, which is available to counties under 20,000. And it looks like, just in the basic reading of it, that we would be eligible 15% of our cost. So that's good. And, um, what's Ms., who's in C R C?
Kristen Jackson.
Kristen Jackson responded to me, she was very quick and said, glad to help you.
Yes.
Let us know as we go. So there's some money there for us. And we're going to have a good year. We're going to keep working.
We're going to have a good three years.
A good three years.
Because we said it, and we're going to do it. Mr. Chair, I was going to go in closed session.
Oh, do you have that motion read?
I think that's in your package, sir.
You want me to read it?
No, I guess you're better off to get one of them to.
I'm trying to want me to read it.
Uh, this one.
This. No, that. That one.
No, she gave me two of them.
They're the same.
They're the same?
Yeah.
Yeah. I move that the Board of Supervisors in Ottawa County, Virginia adjourned into closed meeting pursuant to Code of Virginia 2.2-371183, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically real property located near Fort Barfoot.
Second.
No favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're going to close session.
Let's say I like to bring Mr. Gray.